Recording yet, we still have a minute.
Oh.
Okay, we have seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and this is the city council meeting for Minatrista October 21st, 2024. First order of business, I'd like to ask that you join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone that's here this evening and also for those of you later on joining us, watching us on YouTube. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor and to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, and Claudia Lacy. And then also with us this evening, our staff is Gary Peters, who is our Director of Public Works, and city clerk is Ann Meyerhoff. And next to me, to my right, is our city administrator Jasper Krugel, Brian Grimm is our Finance Director, Sarah Sensala is with Kennedy and Graven, and she is our attorney. And then on the end, we have our Deputy Chief Craig Squires. So again, welcome everyone, we have some special people with us this evening, but first, we're gonna approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, any further discussion? Hearing none, although some favors signify with thy.
Aye.
Although opposed, motion passes 5-0. So again, like I said, we have some special people here this evening, we're gonna start out with our Hennepin County Assessor, assessors, Josh Hogland and Kevin Nguyen. We know Kevin has been around for many years, so you're not a new face, Josh, you are, so thank you, please come forward and we're anxiously awaiting your report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name's Josh Hogland, County Assessor. Kevin is here for all the hard questions, just to be clear. We're just gonna go through briefly, a little bit of, you know, what we do, how we kind of fit into the process, and then we'll talk a little bit about some of the different growth statistics related to the assessment for 2024 payable 2025. Just make sure we got this figured out. Okay. So there's several different components to the budget process. The assessor is one of them, what Kevin and I do for a living. Our responsibility is determine the market value of each property in the county, in the city of Minatrista, and then also determine the state classification based on a property's use. That's what determines the tax rate. And then each taxing authority, such as a city, or the county, or school district, will set their levies and their budgets. Once all of that is figured out at the end of the year, when the final budget is approved in December, that information then goes to the county auditor to calculate how taxes are basically allocated to each property throughout the county, throughout each taxing authority, and then the county treasurer is responsible for collecting all of that and then distributing it out to the different authorities. Specifically to what we do, assessors, assessors are statutorily required to have specific training, much of it from the Department of Revenue. We're also governed by the State Board of Assessors and our licensing requirements. For instance, county assessors required to have the highest level of licensing to even have the position. Our process, very briefly, right now, I always like to start with wherever we are in the point in the process, Kevin's probably collecting new construction. So anybody that's pulled a permit with the city, Kevin's taking a look, trying to figure out what new value might be attributable to those new improvements, and then establishing that for the next year's assessment. Pretty shortly here, we're gonna start tightening the screws on the 2025 assessment for taxes payable in 2026. Once we go through that process, that's kind of a lengthy process, pretty much resolves about the month of February. We send evaluation notices in March. People call us and tell us how great we did.
Or not.
And then we go through that process. A lot of those conversations are kind of explaining what the process is that we undertake throughout the year, and some of the requirements that we have, there are a lot about sales and value, what contributes to value, those sorts of things. And then the city of Minatrista has opted for what's called an open book meeting. It's somewhat of an informal option for appeal at the local level. If the taxpayer's not satisfied at that level, then we'll get into a county board of appeal, which is a little more formal, it's at the county level, there's still a third-party body that makes a decision. And then we get back into collecting data in the summer months. We target market value, 100% of market value on January 2nd. That's our statutory responsibility. The statute also requires us to look at all properties in a jurisdiction within five years. We break that up into what we call a quintile, 20% of each city basically in a given year. And then the Department of Revenue conducts what they call a sales ratio analysis. You may be familiar, the sales ratio analysis starts, so for the 2024 assessment, that sales ratio study period started on October 1st, 2022, and ended on September 30th, 2023. That's basically the stretch of sales that the Department of Revenue used to grade how well we did our job. January 2nd's still our target, that's to see if we're kind of within a range. The Hennepin County target's 95%, the Department of Revenue requires us to be within a range of 90 to 105. As far as state classifications, this is what determines the tax rate for each property. There's five major classifications. Residential, that's three units or less. We have agricultural, we have commercial, industrial, and utilities, excuse me. And then we have apartments, the class four has a lot of miscellaneous type stuff, that's where you'll find seasonal lakes or restaurants, seasonal marinas. There's several different types of property, but it's primarily for apartments for more units. And then the fifth class, which we do not have in Hennepin County, is unmined ore and everything else. They do have a catch-all. Specifically to the 2024 assessment, this is countywide data, and this is net of new improvement. So this is kind of looking at what did the market do throughout the county. Agricultural, we had a 2.4% growth. We actually saw a downturn at 5.1% down. Commercial, negative 2.7%. Industrial, we were up 3.1%, and residential was effectively flat at about 0.4%. A little bit of an advertisement, we have an annual assessment report that we advertise each year in March. If you're ever curious what's going on in the city of Minatrista, you can certainly take a look at that and see what growth is occurring out here, or change. The next is the same numbers in the 2024 column, but a comparison against the prior two years changed statistics. I'll spare reading those out too, but-
And that's countywide.
This is countywide. Which is a great segue to the Minatrista specific data. This is basically the same report. The three years leading up to the 2024 pay 25, agricultural is at 2.4%, commercials at 18.2%, which actually, this is net, so it's actually probably under-reported here based on your new project on Highway 7 there. There's additional commercial that wouldn't be included in this because it's new improvement. And then apartments show 0%. That's also, like I said, net, because all of the apartment value in the city is new improvement for the 24 assessment. Industrial, we're up 6%, and then residential's pretty consistent with the countywide stat at 0.6%. This next line is specific to single-family. This is just a heat map by jurisdiction showing what each city did throughout the county. You can see countywide, 0.6%. You can see Minatrista's at the 0.5 there in the bottom-left corner, and the red indicates negative change. The next slide is the exact same type of map. The biggest difference here is this is actually gross growth. So this is gonna include new construction. So you can see a lot of the orange, red, more yellow areas of the county that are seeing a lot of growth with new housing stock. And then the blue is negative value turn, change. Kind of show the breakdown here between Minneapolis and all those verbs. Next couple of slides are just showing a comparison against Lake Minnetoka communities. Minatrista's kind of in the middle there, off Lake 0.6, on Lake 0.4, across the two. And then you can take a look at how that compares against some of the other communities on the lake. Then to put that into further perspective, this is the median home values for the last three years in each of those communities.
So it's interesting, you don't have Victoria on there, because it's not all in Hennepin County?
Yeah. And this is the last slide. This is just to show what the homestead market value exclusion looks like as a total of all estimated market value in the county. You can see, let's just do countywide at the bottom, pay 2023, so that was a 22 assessment, we're at about 1.286% excluded from the total residential market value. We had a pretty monster growth here within there. That number dropped pretty substantially to 0.777%. And then we had a legislative change that changed the calculation for homestead market value exclusion, which is why we see it brought back up for the pay 2025 to that 1.465. Previously, the homestead market value exclusion capped out at a value of $413,800, and in the 2023 legislative session, they changed that to $517,200, which basically excluded an additional almost $2 billion from the overall county tax base, or value base.
Could you explain that a little bit more? So how does that work then, that one, say, one point, whatever, is excluded from being taxed, and then the 99% or 98% is taxed, is that-
So, when a property's homesteaded, they qualify for an exclusion in statute. And there's kind of a math equation that if the property's valued, I believe, 95%, that's when the exclusion maxes out. And then it's basically kind of a slow burnout from that $95,000 in estimated market value up to the 517,200. At 517,200, there's zero exclusion. So for instance, this is not gonna be the correct math, but if a property's worth $250,000, a portion of that 250 is basically gonna be excluded from the tax calculation. So they're actually gonna be taxed on a reduced number. And you can see the rise in percentage of total. That was primarily a product of a legislative change last year.
Okay, thank you.
They probably did that because of inflation and because of home pricing going up and so on, because I think that 413, or whatever it was, had been around for quite a while. Yeah, 20 years. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, it was about 20 years. When the homestead credit was created, the math really didn't change.
Okay.
There is a deeper description of that. If you see the sales books that we send out in spring, there's, there'll be a graph.
Okay.
Okay. I had that conversation.
Okay. How many adjusters or appraisers, adjusters, appraisers would take on Minatrista?
As far as res, Kevin's?
Pretty much me. Once in a while, I have a-
For the quintile, or the, when you do that, you just want, you're doing all the houses?
There are some exceptions to that, or, I'm conscious of whatever, also maybe to pick up a little bit of slack for me, but I'm upset, there's nobody on earth who has seen the properties in your city.
Well, it's been around a long time.
Because I actually called and they said there were 10 appraisers in a certain area, and nine of them weren't from this area. I thought, how would they be qualified to gauge how much a property should go up? Does that sound crazy?
It's a data analysis. Plus, it's not, well, somebody living in here, I don't live in the area.
So you're just kind of looking on a computer and-
And literally down the street, and physically through every single house in the city, several times over my career. And so, it's not, any qualified appraiser is gonna be out on the streets learning the nuances and talking to taxpayers and finding out why this or that may affect value, doing appeals, digging into the data, digging into the characteristics of the city, and houses, and whatever might be, the case that might affect value of the jobs, just to try to make sure that the word value was actually there and more than less. Make sure everybody's saying, regardless of what they're taxing, they should know that they're only paying their fair share, and so are all the neighbors. I probably get a bigger percentage than you might guess. Not so much concerned about, I'm not, people saying, I don't care so much about my own value, I just wanna make sure my neighbor's paying their fair share. So utilization is, is the entire problem, fairness and equity. And else that I've been here, doing it for 15 years, but if I take over a new city, like when I took over St. Bond, within a couple of years, I had it pretty well nailed down. Taking over other cities these days, and process over.
So when you say you're taking, how many cities do you have?
Right now, I'm back, I'm gonna be back down to three.
So you personally are doing all of the homes in every one of these cities?
Yeah.
You don't have any other appraisers or adjusters?
Not, I'm the lead appraiser for, I have been the lead appraiser for Spring Park, Minatrista, and St. Bond for seven or eight years, all those together. I've had Spring Park on and off a couple of different times where I've managed on somebody else when I took over a different project. Minatrista's the one that I don't wanna let go of, because I say, I kinda watched the draw from retire over the past, you know, three years. I don't wanna, whether I told her to retire, so as long as, as long as I keep winning that battle with my managers and principals, hopefully that'll be the case. But we take over, we've taken over other cities. Right now, we now handle a lot of it now, like Minnetoka. A few years ago, we didn't. So, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe to add a little bit, as I said, we have 34 appraisers on the entire staff, and if, you know, two years ago, we got abomarded by phone calls because the value increases. And in those scenarios, we did have to bring in staff from other locations that maybe weren't getting as many phone calls to assist with some of those conversations.
Yes. I would, average, maybe 100, 110 calls a year, and you have reviews to do on 30 or 40 of them. That year, I had 350 calls just from Minatrista, plus my other cities. And so now I could handle a little volume on that that year.
I was one of those calls, and they were all worked delightful.
Do you change any value if, say, the house is well-maintained versus not so well-maintained?
Yeah, that's part of why we need to look at them in person as much as we can, because that changes what's called the effective age of the house, and it changes the depreciation. Simple example, you have two identical houses next door to each other, and they were built, you know, five years apart, or they're otherwise twins. One of them's got five years worth of wear and tear on it, it's depreciated more, and that shows up in the depreciation rates that we apply, and those are developed based on analysis by our data people of sales of white houses all over the county. So, yes, if a house has a particular deficiency of some kind, sometimes I see myself, sometimes it's brought to my attention when somebody calls for reviews, there's a way I can sell for this. And I get out there and I think, oh, yeah, they have some issues here, they have a cost to cure number, maybe it's $20,000 for re, for installing grain tile or something. We make adjustments for that, and then the problem's corrected, and we put the value back again once. It's your, same way we address somebody putting an addition on your house. The whole house isn't effectively an 1850 house, if it's had an addition put on it last year, it's effectively somewhat newer. The average is a little bit newer. What changes the depreciation curve, doesn't bring out the brand in those, but it brings it up somewhat. And then we apply similar logic when there's, you know, like a whole upstream model, or something like that. Try, it's all, it's all to try to just match what houses actually do sell for, what people, ready and willing, buyers and sellers are agreed to keep the prices.
Do you collaborate at all with our inspectors, or?
I talk to Robert, Robert a lot, and Ryan once in a while. Robert and I email, I email him a post to the old thing, and then I'm in there, of course, looking at new construction, you know, pulling plans, bringing blueprints, that model, just to draw them up before I go to see them in the field. Or once in a while, just calling to say, I see something going on at this house, do you have a permit on it? Because I haven't seen anything about it. I don't get surprised very often, but once in a while, I do come across something going on that looks like it ought to have a permit, and it doesn't. So I don't care whether, I don't personally care whether it does or not. It doesn't affect whether, whether I value it or not. The value changes, if somebody does like a kitchen remodel, they may not need a full permit to change cabinets. It's not necessarily required for permit if there's no plumbing change, or electrical change. But that doesn't mean that it would sell from work, it's got many new grants and cabinets connected.
But you bring it to Robert's attention?
I'll still address it, and Robert may, may or may not.
Okay. Anything else that you wish to share?
Just any other questions from you?
Generally, home values, what are you seeing happening in the market today? Just kind of general.
We're in the early stages of starting to analyze that for the 2025 assessment. I would say generally speaking, we're not gonna see 20% increases like a couple of years ago, but it's a little bit of a mixed bag. I think it's a little bit dependent on location, for the most part, but probably in that half to percentage range up.
Okay.
Make sure, more of a mixed bag, some places where it's actually showing signs that it might slide just a little bit in certain pits and bays, and other areas where it's, where I'm still seeing 15, 20% under what they're selling for. So, but Minatrista's always like that. I mean, houses usually use one thing, but if one area will get hot, and prices will get pushed up by purchases, and people then start back, can't afford that, so they go look over in this other, it's like we'll just turn, it's like that.
And just real quick, a real quick question. So if you don't hit that 90 percentile, then let's, you're under it, what happens then?
So, in May, the Department of Revenue runs those ratio reports based on what we come up with for the 20, for instance, the 2025 assessment. If we're below 90%, let's say, in the city of Minatrista, then the Commissioner of Revenue acts as the State Board of Equalization and can increase the entire city's assessment by 5% increments. So for instance, if we're at 89.9%, the city will be at 94.9% based on that action. I don't think we've ever-
I don't think it's ever happened, right? It's just good to know, because I think a lot of people think, oh, no, I don't raise my value, and yet I know that you have to be equal across the board, and also you have to keep an eye on that 90 percentile, so you're not undervaluing properties too. So, all right. How much of the gigantic increase in property value had to do with, you know, fixing the Minneapolis and needing more tax dollars to address the decline of Minneapolis?
I don't, that doesn't really impact anything. We're looking at the sales activity specific to the jurisdiction and then responding to that. Our ratio, I'm sorry, our ratio study is actually just the city of Minatrista, so that's what we're grading on.
Thank you. What has happened, or what did happen, is when all of the commercial properties in downtown Minneapolis took a nosedive, then what happens is the residential properties had to pick up a larger portion of that. And those communities that had higher valuations or increased valuations actually ended up, in essence, picking up more of those tax dollars. I mean, that's, that's just how it works. But, so, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking your time coming out, and I know we'll see you again. So, thank you. Thank you, Kevin, thank you. All right. So next, we have Michael Kirkwood with us. He is the city's representative to the LMCD, Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. Just kind of FYI, there's 14 cities that surround Lake Minnetonka, so there's 14 members on the LMCD board, and each city has a representative, and Michael has been our representative for a number of years. I wanna say thank you, thank you, and thank you, because it's a lot of work, there's a lot of meetings, and there's committee meetings, and we really, really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Enormous power.
Thank you all, Madam Mayor, council members. I was just gonna highlight a few of the things that were going on that would be relevant to this city, and there's some questions and issues that we have. You're familiar with the Save the Lake Fund, which was a fund that started back, actually, when, pretty much when LMCD started. It was designed to generate revenue to support improvements around the lake. We've been using it in the past for different kinds of equipment for fire departments and police departments, that they'd be able to find, you know, lost people in the lake and whatever, so it's been very useful kind of purposes. About three years ago, a couple of the members of the board were concerned about not having adequate water patrol protection for the lake, and so they decided to, they raised some funds the first couple of years, and then that ended. So now we're looking at trying to find $95,000 to support two additional water patrol officers on the lake. And the donations this year are down to around $30,000, so we're stretching and scratching our heads as to how to get that back in. But from the water patrol perspective, it's a significant concern. Normally, there would be eight full-time year-round deputies spread over four separate shifts. We have a ninth deputy, apparently, will be starting in 2025. But that's basically on a regular duty cycle, that's two deputies covering 104 county lakes and three rivers. And historically, one has been assigned to Lake Minnetonka, which makes it's pretty limited coverage. For a true water emergency, it can take a deputy 10 minutes to get on scene in normal circumstances. Sometimes they can do it in less than five. So, we have, we've, we granted them $95,000 three years ago, or two years ago, excuse me, in order to get two extra deputies on the lake, daytime and into about 2:00 in the morning. This last year, the actual cost for that was $76,000. So this donation begging model, which historically we've had, has made several of us uncomfortable, that it is very unreliable, and it may not give us the spending that we need. So, we haven't given it up yet, we're still having another campaign coming out. You'll see it probably by email in the near future, that says we want to, again, continue to raise money for two more officers. But the question has been raised, should we be going back to the cities for kind of a notion of an additional kick on the, on the assessment to support the police officers? That might add to Minatrista maybe $5,000 to $6,000 on your current assessment, which I think is around 30, 35,000. It hasn't been decided yet, but it's been talked about. So we're trying to focus on the safety perspective. I've appreciated, this panel in the past has given me kind of positive perspectives on the idea that safety is something that you are concerned about and believe in, and a stop sign is as important as a water patrol officer from time to time. So that's kind of where that stands. We're no final answers yet, but we're looking at, trying to address that. Solar lights in the past came out of the Save the Lake Fund, and now we've made that a actual part of the line item budget, because we thought that was pretty important as well. So maintaining the solar lights, and that's about $5,000 a year, so it really helps people navigate on the lake at night and avoid collisions and so on. Questions anytime, let me know. Boats for hire, we've had individuals who are advertising their very expensive boats for hire on the lake to make a few dollars on the side in order to help cover the costs on those things. And some of the issues that have come out of that was, they were, most of them were not going through the water patrol inspection process and safety upgrades, so there were some risks in that environment. They, in some cases, were picking up and dropping off people at private residences, which make the neighborhood look like a business site, and that was a concern for a number of people. So they've been, excuse me, executive director and staff have been creating new requirements for licensing for those who would want to rent their boats. And there are some restrictions as to depending on the size of the boat, so what they need to do to be qualified to be a rental boat on the lake. We provide, as you know, some seed funding for lake water improvement projects, brought to us by the Volunteer Bay Associations. I think Harrison Bay was one that you've worked with in the past, that we're still, have some funds- have some funds available for doing that. We've been spending a lot of time in the last few months investing in website improvements to make it an easier search function and updating contents. In the past year, all of our relevant past legal documents have been scanned and will be cross-referenced online. We, we had one of those horrible situations where someone was going to sue us and demanded all the paperwork from time zero. It was a huge project, although it did get us to looking into a lot of boxes and throwing things away we didn't need anymore. So there was a major cleanup from that process as well. But now that we have, are making everything online on the website. So it's a lot easier to find the historic documents. We saw a wonderful and scary electric water safety presentation. There's apparently an expert who's from this area who was talking about how many deaths have been, not necessarily on Lake Minnetonka, but in the country from electrocution on homeowners on the shores. If someone falls in the water and there's an electrical leak, somebody will stop swimming and nobody knows why. So someone jumps in to save them and now you've got two victims or the, or the fire department comes and they're at risk. So this, if you have anybody who lives on the lake with wiring down to their dock, you would encourage them to go to the website and take a look at the safety guidelines for electricity on the water because it was a surprising, a surprising presentation. Let's see here, wake boats last, next to the last one. Wake boat studies are proceeding across the nation on the impact of prop wash, not only creating wakes, but now they're also finding that it's scouring the bottom of the lake, stirring up all the sediment and creating problems in that regard. So a lot of other countries, excuse me, states have been doing some, some studies in that area. And we're still waiting for results from the University of Minnesota St. Anthony Falls Research Center on the impacts through the water column and the lake bottom from wake boats, which are, have an incredible thrust to stir up the bottom. So that may at some point require us to establish some procedures. We've put a 350-foot setback on the lake rule two years ago. And I would ask Claudia if she's seen it enforced at all in her neighborhood. I'm not seeing it in mine. So it's a challenge for the water patrol to, to enforce that at a level that makes a difference, but it's available if we need to. People have been stopped for that. Lastly, as you may know, we have had an interim director for the last year, year and a half who is fabulous. Unfortunately, he's 83 and we're losing him.
Wait, wait. Marvin Johnson is 89 and he was still the mayor in Independence. So Jim Finn Meyer can stick around a while longer, right?
Kirk wasn't in here 30 years too and he's no chicken either. So we're hoping that he'll hang on as long as possible. In more ways than one.
More ways than one.
Copy him on this.
Right, right.
But he's been an outstanding resource to the board with deep knowledge, professionalism. He'll likely stay to late winter of 2025 and then a search for replacement would be going on, although there's some debate as to do we want a full-time person, we need a full-time person. So there's going to be that discussion too. He's hired and coached a very effective staff that's working right now. So that concludes my answer.
Thank you. I do have two questions.
Questions?
One, would you ever consider deputizing people that wanted to volunteer? There are volunteers. That's what I want to know, Bob.
Sheriff Department?
Well, volunteer, drive out and go, you're an hour past jet ski, here's a giant fine. I love fines.
I would invite you to have that conversation with the water patrol, see what they say.
They do have volunteers that, that, that.
They used to have volunteers. One of the things they pointed out to us is that at one time they had eight or nine volunteers. Now in the last couple of years, they only have one or two.
Okay, but I don't think that they can issue citations. Say they can maybe issue warnings or tell people what they're doing wrong. I don't think, I think it's similar to the police department. They can't issue citations. But, but maybe we need to get more volunteers.
You talked about the jet skis. So I'm all for business people doing, enjoying the lake life. But the jet skis that are being rented, are being rented, jet skis are powerful, dangerous, scary things. And they're being rented to people without any classes. They get on these things that go 60 miles an hour and many times they're out one hour past the deadline. It's dark and I watch it every night in front of, you know, I watch it on the lake and, and we are out there just beside ourselves. And by the time we call, they're gone.
Yeah.
And it's constant. So I don't know what, you know, you talk about, it's just a very prevalent, constant issue.
And I know that they're attending to it as best they can. They've, the water patrol people I've talked to are very frustrated by what's going on over at Surfside.
Yeah.
Is where they're launching from there. And they are coming out, they're coming out from all over, out of the city, no experience on the water. We had one fall off in front of my house, they couldn't swim to shore. We're out there throwing things for them and it happens on probably lots of places on your side as well.
And it's, it's every lake. And so really I think it needs to be addressed at the state level and they need to make it mandatory that they have to get licensed or have some kind of training before taking these, these, a boat or a jet ski out because it's dangerous.
Or even governors on the speed.
Yeah.
Because, you know, when our kids were young, we had governors on them and they couldn't go faster than 25 miles an hour.
Yeah.
And there is a law that's passed and now everybody has to be licensed, take a class in any boat.
Okay.
Going forward, next year starts that process.
I think unless you're a certain age.
Well, no, it's any, my understanding is it's any age.
Okay.
And that's partly so that when people come from other states.
Right.
Go to a resort, rent a boat.
Right.
The boat renting people will know they have some basic knowledge.
Knowledge, okay.
Let them be sure of that.
Yep. So if anybody in the city has issue or has questions regarding the LMCD, they should contact you, right?
Sure, why not?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yep. Really appreciate it. All right. Next we move on to persons to be heard. We don't have anybody signed up. We do have a, Bill, right? Did you, will you have questions regarding the feasibility? Because I'll give you an opportunity then if you have questions.
[inaudible].
Okay. All right. So we're going to move on and to our consent agenda items and giving you an opportunity if you wish later. So consent agenda, are there any you wish to remove? Otherwise, they consist of A, approve our work session meeting minutes from October 7th, 2024. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October 7th, 2024. C is approve a conditional offer of employment for community service officer Caleb Vanderplas. And D is approve a parking lot use agreement with the West Hunka Recreational Association. And E is a resolution to approve claims. And F is a resolution approving the Henning County mitigation plan update. Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mefkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes by vote. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will move on to our business item, which consists of our street improvement project for 2025. And Emily Brown is with us this evening with WSB. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here for the 2025 street improvement project for the city. So just a little background, we looked at three areas for this year's street project. There's Windridge Trail, Pine Circle and the Trillium area. That includes Trillium Lane West, Trillium Lane East and Trillium Way. The city initially evaluated these streets and then pavement cores were also taken. Looking at the existing conditions, you can see the pictures here on the screen. Pine Circle was originally built in 1973. It's experienced allegrated cracking and potholes. Trillium area was built in 1994. Asphalt has been losing bond with its aggregates. This is really apparent in the coring that we took. I know that there's been, a lot of people will visually inspect that surface and think that it's a reasonable driving surface, but you look down at the cores and it's de-bonding from the top surface, which shows strain that's really getting in and then the water will go beneath the surface and start really breaking up that top layer over time. So that's why that street was included in the street project. And then Windridge Trail was built in 95, 1995. The base layer has shown failure on the cores that we, we took. So we are proposing full-depth reclamation on each of these streets. That includes pulverizing the existing pavement surface into the aggregate surface below. What this creates is a aggregate material that can be compacted and used as the base layer for the new pavement section. So essentially this machine that you see on the screen grinds up the existing pavement with the aggregate layer below that creates like a gravel-like surface. It's re-comacted in place and then paving crew comes and paves in new pavement section over the top of it. So as far as the street improvements, we're not proposing any lane widths or street widths. We'll match as closely as we can with the existing grades, match into driveways, things like that. There have been areas that were identified as holding water, will make improvements to remove any areas that are, are low or holding water, showing ponding, things like that. We'll be doing spot curb and gutter repair in the Trillium area again to try and get after those curb sections that are cracked or holding water. And then we're looking at a one-foot aggregate shoulder on Windridge. For Pine Circle, we looked at the existing cul-de-sac island. That's been a maintenance issue for the city staff. So we're proposing two different options for the council to consider. One option would be to remove the cul-de-sac island and pave it so it'd be entirely a paved surface. The other option would be to reconstruct the cul-de-sac island to existing, our current standards that would include installing curb and gutter and putting a median nose on the end that would help reduce any sort of plow collisions that would happen in the winter.
Do those, would you have to remove the trees then too?
The tree, we'd have to look at that in the field, given that it's so close to the edge of the pavement. It would likely be that the tree would be removed.
Okay, okay.
He's nodding yes.
Yes.
The fencing would come down and that could be reinstalled after the project depending
on what the city's.
Why is the fencing there?
I assume it's an aesthetic thing. It looks like there's some edging there. So maybe there was an additional landscaping under the fencing.
Do you remember when the family, they liked that island?
I remember them liking the island.
Their kids there. And it slows people down and they really like it.
I'm just confused about the fencing.
For utility improvements, we're looking at installation of INI barriers to show an infiltration in areas that have none. This is exclusive to Pine Circle. Trillium area has already had these INI barriers installed. There's also a leaky valve that would be repaired with the project. That's at Trillium Way and Trillium Lane, that intersection. So the proposed costs for these improvements, the surface improvements range from 1.4 million, 10,000 to 1.4 million, 17,000. The difference in that is related to the Pine Circle Island. The lower cost would be paving over the island. The higher cost would be reinstating it with the, the new curb section. Sanitary sewer improvements are estimated at 32,000. Water main improvements are estimated at 17,000. That would bring the project total cost to approximately 1,460,000. The city Minnetrista assessment policy, excuse me, properties are assessed in accordance with the city's assessment policy and Minnesota State Statute 429. Historically, properties have been assessed roughly 50% of the project cost. In 2022, the city did a special benefit analysis and at council's directions, assessments are proposed to be capped at $10,000 per unit. Project costs, when I refer to that, it's related to the surface and storm improvements. It does not include the sanitary and water improvements. Those are paid for by the city 100%. There are hardship deferrals available for senior citizens, disabled persons, members of National Guard or military reserves. And payments are typically issued on a 20-year period. Assessment questions can be directed to Brian Grimm for those that would have further So for proposed assessments, Windridge Trail met that threshold for $10,000. So that is what is proposed per unit on Windridge Trail. Pine Circle, the assessments range between 8,100 and 8,700 dollars per unit. 8,100 would be in association with removing the cul-de-sac and paving it. 8,700 would be associated with reinstating it with curb. The Trillium area assessments are estimated to be $9,700 per unit. So the total costs and the proposed funding for the project are shown. So I have broken out the surface improvements for each area. I should have probably made this clear earlier, but each area is assessed for the work on that street. So Windridge is assessed for the Windridge improvements, Pine Circle, et cetera. So you can see the breakdown of the costs there in addition to the assessments. Those are based on the assessments on the previous slide. And as you can see, the sanitary and water main improvements are solely the city's responsibility. So looking at the project schedule, right now we are at acceptability report and call a public hearing at the council's discretion tonight. It's October 21st, assuming that the council decides to move forward at this point. We're proposing the public hearing beyond November 18th. At that point, the council can choose to move forward with plans and specifications. We would look to open bids on this project February 5th. And then the assessment hearing would be early next year. Construction would be from June to September of 2025. Just to be clear, the June to September timeframe, since these are three separate project areas, it is not expected that construction would last for all areas during this entire timeframe. It's the window in which construction likely happen. Each of the constructed areas would be on a shorter timeframe, roughly a month to six weeks is what we're expecting. With that, I would like to thank the council and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Okay. I think, questions first and then we'll talk about the island. And then also, do we talk about assessments tonight? Do we establish those?
Madam Mayor, thank you. So the feasibility report presented the options based on the council direction provided at the last meeting. If the council is comfortable with that $10,000 cap and the assessments as proposed through here, those are the amounts that we would share with, with folks in the, at the public hearing. It does not commit the council to that assessment methodology or those numbers, but at least gives people, both the council and the residents, an idea of what the anticipated cost would be.
Okay. All right. So if we don't have any questions right now, did you have any questions?
Maybe just a couple.
So come to the podium and just state your name and address just for the record and then hopefully we can answer your questions.
Hi, I'm Bill Kennedy. I live in Trillium Bay and I'm president of the HOA. One question I had is, as those numbers are being established, is there a correlation between the length of repavement on the roads between the various neighborhoods? In other words, is one of those charges for a net two miles of roadway and another neighborhood might have a mile and a half? Is that how those numbers are calculated?
So it's basically based on the whole project. So not, and of course the, the length of the road is going to determine the cost of the project. But, so and assessments are on a per parcel basis, not on a per frontage basis. That, we determined that many, many years ago.
I think he's asking whether or not Trillium is only paying for Trillium's road.
Yes.
Well, kind of. I guess is the length of the improvement in one neighborhood based, if, you know, one unit, one neighborhood was two miles and Trillium was a mile and a half, would you assume, all things being equal, that the charge would be 75% of what the overall bill for? The other neighborhood would be assuming that you don't have gutter and things like that that come into play and, and change the number?
Emily, I mean.
So the, the costs are based on if the streets are comparable, so comparable width, comparable work being done. Yeah, we use similar pricing for each area so that the, the cost would be comparable in that manner. That said, Trillium is a little bit wider street than, than Pine. So there, there would be a difference there if we did a per mileage basis.
The good thing is that because we're going to bid these together, but they're separate projects, each area is actually going to benefit from kind of, you know.
Having an overall.
Having it, yeah, bulk, bulk, yeah. Each area is actually going to benefit from kind of, you know, having it, yeah, bulk, bulk, yeah, exactly, so.
Now, the second question I had was, um, if I recall from the last meeting, uh, people had the option, I think by November of next year, once their assessment has been established, to pay it in full to avoid any.
Interest, correct.
Interest charges would be based on what the bonds are put out at. Uh, that would cover that or whatever funding costs would be linked to it.
Well, for this one, we're not going to do bonding. So what we do is we look at the market and we say, let's just say interest rates are 3.5%. Our policy is to do 2% above the going rate so that it covers our costs as well. So I'm going to guess, I think, um, for the last year it was to five, 5%?
Five or five and a half. And we just issued the, the other one that we just did and it was 3.5%.
It's probably going to be around 5, 5.5%.
And just to clarify, uh, on, uh, the payoff of, uh, an assessment, I thought I heard at the November meeting that if the homeowner didn't do it by November of 2025, that they wouldn't have an opportunity, let's say a year or two later to pay it off?
No, you can't.
You can't, you just can't make any, the first year you can make partial payments. Say if you want to pay from, you know, five out of the 10 or something.
Okay.
We've had people do that in the first year, but after the first year, it has to be paid off in full in the subsequent year by November 15th of that, that next year, that, that new amount. You know, if you've paid one year, you know, to the county and then there'd be the remaining 18 years to.
So if you had a $9,700 assessment and somebody wanted to pay 4,700 before November, then the five would be remaining. And would you have to pay that all off or could you pay it?
That five could then, that five would be then the new principal amount. That would be that initial amount that'd go to the county and they, the assessment over the 20 years would be at the five for that individual parcel. And then they would have the opportunity to pay in full, but not, they couldn't make any more partial.
They couldn't make increments.
Yeah, correct.
All right, thank you, those are just.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, council, so I think there's a couple of questions. Um, we, we should give some people some, um, idea in terms of what they might, might expect for assessment. And then also the Center Island, I, I agree with Claudia, we should keep the Center Island. I'm sorry, Gary. I just think, you know, happy, happy residents, happy life.
It's not like it's costing 50 grand more, it's $7,000 more.
Seven, seven, yeah, 7,000.
$1,000 more to keep it, so.
And so here's, here's what I would propose. I know you said, um, can you pull up those numbers for assessments? It was 8,700 for them. Just round it up to 9,000 because they're getting their island. And then doing, just do 9,000, everybody. It just will make it easier.
Yeah, I agree.
What, what are you whispering?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, the question.
Why would we do that when it's not, I mean, isn't?
I mean, we.
It's only three different amounts.
It's three different amounts.
I would say it's, if it was like 30 different amounts, I'd maybe probably agree with trying to win what down. But it's, it's, we did like with lowering, uh, hardscrabble in Storm Ridge, we had like three, or Minneapolis, we had like three or four different amounts that year. I, I think, I think it's fine to do the three. We can handle it, yeah, basically.
I was just thinking for the Pine Circle, then they would pay a little more to pay for the Center Island, but okay. Anyhow, that was just my thought.
How much of a loss would that be of assessment? Because of course the.
Well, see.
Well, what, what is Windridge without the $10,000 cap?
We calculated it to be over 20,000.
Okay, so I mean, like they're, they're all, it's a pretty good discount, all real. I mean, yeah, and that, that, that follows what we said at the last meeting of this is what we were going to do.
It seems it's a slippery slope to keep.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Arguing down.
One year over, Peter.
Okay, that's making things easy, okay.
Can I just ask this question? Um, Pine Circle, um, how many families did we hear from, one, two?
About the island?
Yeah.
Well, the one gentleman was here, saying that they really wanted to keep it.
What if we find out that no one really loves it except him and they didn't want to pay the extra 8,000?
No, they're only paying $600 more.
Oh, okay, it's only $600 for the island?
It's, it's $7,000 for the project, but yeah, $600 per the person.
No one else wants the island. And do we send, do we call him up and say, you should talk to all your neighbors? And, you know, cause what if we do this for one neighbor?
Put it this way, I think if they don't want it, that they would have been here saying, go ahead. And that's, that's my opinion.
Devil's advocate.
They'll get another chance to come in and say, we don't want the island before the job is finalized.
Correct.
Yeah, there's the public.
There, there will be, yeah, at least a couple more touch points plus a public hearing for the assessments.
So if everyone shows up and only one person wants it, then we can always pull it back.
They have to do with plans and specification. That's, that's the difference.
Mayor Whelan, if I may, I think what might be beneficial is in the special, in the public hearing notice, um, we include the estimated assessment amount. And you could indicate that this would be to keep the island in place. And that would certainly generate questions if somebody thought, well, how much is it if it's not? Um, and I'm trying, it's the, there isn't that many properties on Pine Circle.
It's like four or five, maybe?
I wanted to say six.
Six.
I was off by one, excuse me.
To your point, it's a very low number and that if we, if we indicate that in the, um.
But only to the Pine Circle.
Correct, yeah, correct, because each notice would be specific.
Yeah, okay. All right, sounds good. So I think so what the council is saying, we're, we're good with these assessments. All right.
Yeah.
And, um, and keep, and right now we're looking at keeping the island and you'll send out that notice. All right, thank you very much. And any other questions? Comments, all right. With that then, um, I believe that that is the end of our, um, yeah, we need to receive the feasibility report. So that ends our business items, except. So a motion to, uh, receiving the feasibility report and then we can do this all together. Um, call for the public hearing and the public hearing will be on.
November 18th.
November 18th. So is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, any further questions? So public hearing, November 18th, receiving the feasibility report. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So that is it, thank you very much. And we'll move on to administrative items such as the staff reports, elections.
Yeah, um, Ann can just give an update about how things have been going with, uh, direct balloting, which started on Friday.
So we started direct balloting on Friday. Um, prior to that, we were doing it with the envelopes, um, since September. We processed here in Minutista City Hall, 462 envelopes that were picked up by Hennessy County before, on Friday. And so then Friday, our first day, we had 129 voters. Today, we had 83 voters. So we're up to 212 already in just two days.
Wow.
Using the machine.
Yeah. All right.
And then we're open, um, we'll be open from nine to three on Saturday, October 26th, Saturday, November 2nd, and Sunday, November 3rd.
Okay.
So.
And, and, and that's also on our website, those times, right? And those times are only here at City Hall, not at the respective polling places, which will be open on November 5th.
Correct.
Thank you. All right.
And I just wanted to thank staff, Ann, for being here all those hours. There's some additional hours that we didn't, we haven't had to do in the past, so it's.
Yeah.
Taxing on staff, for sure.
Giving up your weekend.
Yeah, thank you. For democracy. Right, all right. Any other staff reports?
None.
All right.
Wait.
We have council staff. Since you volunteered to be first, Claudia.
Yeah, I'll go first. Um, I would respectfully like to ask that we, um, revisit at the next work session, talking about the Gillespie Center. I think there was some pertinent financial information that wasn't addressed and shared with you. And I think it's worth a little bit more discussion.
Okay, um, let me first ask staff, what do we have on the 18th? Are we full or do we, can we add it there or do we want to add it maybe at the December 2nd?
Give me one second, I'll pull this up. I don't know off the top of my head.
And I'm fine with December 2nd, whatever works.
Yeah, right, right now for the work session on the 18th, we have the park dedication and tree replacement budget discussion. And that's it.
Okay, so we'll put it, does the council want to have this on the work session for the 18th? Okay, we'll put that on the work session for the 18th. Thank you. All right. Um, anything else?
Uh, well, the Three Rivers Park District, uh, did coring on, uh, the Whale Tail, uh, project to see how effective the oil treatment was. So, uh, we have, they'll give us a report, I think, at the next.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah.
Lisa and myself and Jasper attended the fire partnership meeting, um, that last week or the week before?
The week before, I think.
For the 8th, October 8th. Um, it was, not much was determined. Hopefully at the next meeting, we decided if we're going to move forward with discussing having a JPA. That's literally the update.
So it's been kind of a slow, slow-moving process, I think to our frustration. Um, we, we, so here's the thing, we, you know, and, and that, the number, number of reasons for, I know, try and get into it very respectfully, because I understand, I think Kathleen and I and even Jasper, we kind of look at things up here. We look at the big picture. We, we, we don't want to get down into the weeds and know all of the little minutia details. But there are people that really need that, that really need all the little details and they need all kinds of information that may not even be pertinent to it, but they want it.
Able to be given at this stage.
And so I think that's what the hangup is and so we have to be patient. And, um, and we have to kind of allow them to go through their process and, um, and respect that. So, uh, what the previous meeting, it had been asked, well, why don't you tell us what different incremental changes you could make to the existing system that would make it work? And both the city, um, both chiefs from both, um, fire departments came back and said, here's incremental changes we can make, but these are a Band-Aid. They are simply a short-term solution. They will not be a long-term, sustainable organizational, uh, change or a solution. And there's going to be cost to those. And, um, in, in our minds, we're like thinking, um, we don't want to do a short-term Band-Aid solution. We need a permanent, big, long-term solution. And the others, some other people felt like they wanted to have the numbers. What do the numbers cost for these short-term solutions? And they felt that they couldn't make the next step because they, they didn't have their council's approval. And so, um, I just want to make clear here, I'm assuming we're all on the same board here and we want to move forward and you are giving us your blessing to make some decisions, um, at these meetings. And then we bring them back to you.
When we get to make the decision.
We are only going to be making recommendations ultimately. And ultimately, the councils are going to be making those decisions, those final decisions. But I think, um, it's a little slower than we'd like. So it's moving forward, but, um, and we're being patient.
Okay, I get it.
All right.
All you can do.
Um, I also attended, anything else?
I will be attending the next one.
Yeah.
The mound fire meeting is November 7th, which I will be attending.
Okay. And then, um, I also attended, um, the mayor's, um, Minnesota Mayor's Association meetup last week. And it was interesting, they actually asked how many people, how many mayors were running unopposed? And it is amazing, there's like more than 50% are running unopposed. So we need to get people interested in, and it's not just, um, mayor's positions, it's council positions too.
You don't like running unopposed?
Well.
Very relaxed.
My God. Well, okay. So disclosure, I like running unopposed, but there is, I mean, I don't think that there has ever been an election where there have been so many, um, positions right, being unopposed.
Everybody went back to work.
Yeah, right, yeah, maybe so. It was just, um, kind of interesting. Um, and then some really good networking. The other thing I just want to kind of, um, keep the eyes open, the middle missing housing bill will come forward again. Um, apparently this summer, a lot of checks have been passing between lobbyists and elected officials. So, um, just, you know, campaign contributions. So, um, it's going to be a tough battle. Uh, we'll have to keep our eyes on it. They don't know for sure yet if it's going to be a bonding year. But if it is, um, whoever is elected, we are going to start lobbying them to go for a bonding bill immediately because we want some of that money, we need some of that money. So we will be going after that if they do a bonding bill this year or next year. Um, that's basically it. So with that, I'm finished. And then remember, um, we have the special meeting for the, um, um, camp, uh, canvassing the, um, results. That's on the.
11th, 12th.
On the 12th, okay. And, um, that's just, just for that, there won't be anything else on that agenda. And I think Kathleen and I will be there and.
I'll be there.
You'll be there, okay. And, but you can join, I mean, it's a.
Lost my phone, I won't be there.
Okay, no, that's fine, we have three at least, yeah. Um, and then of course, the 18th is our meeting and then the 2nd, um, of December will be our last meeting of the year. And we'll say goodbye to Ann, yes. And then of course, December 5th coming up is a fabulous holiday event, so. Um, we're looking forward to it. It was fabulous last year and it's going to be even more fabulous this year. It's going to have fireworks, so. And we have, um, we think we have about $10,000 worth of, um, sponsorships. And if you haven't, um, sponsored yet, you're certainly welcome to do so. And, um, like I said last time, Lifetime is, I think so far, the biggest sponsor. So we want to thank all, and we'll be thanking all of our sponsors. I think WSB, Kennedy and Graven, um, A2S, they are also big sponsors. We want to thank them as well. So with that, we can be adjourned.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.